Good morning. We're going to be swearing in our elected officials on January 11th, 2021. Commissioner Hasbrook, if you could raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I, Elton Hasbrook.
I, Elton Hasbrook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
And that I will perform the duties of Commissioner.
And that I will perform the duties of Commissioner.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Doug. I want to be proud of it.
And then if you want to sign your document?
Yep. Then the next one up, I guess, will be Brian.
Yeah, oh yeah. You want me to use your phone or? Do you want it portrait or? Wouldn't your credit cards right here too?
If it's in the courtroom first thing in the morning.
Brian, here's Bible if you want to use the Bible.
Absolutely.
Please read it, Brian, and repeat after me. I, Brian Knuckle.
I, Brian Knuckle.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
And that I will perform the duties of prosecuting attorney.
And I will perform the duties of prosecuting attorney.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Do you want to do that there? And Brian, after you get done signing that, I don't know if you'd like to take a picture with your family behind the Valley County emblem?
Yeah.
If you'd like.
It looks like a Chinese sandwich.
Can you read it? Should we do that now?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, go ahead. How long guys? Don't you go next?
We got lots of time.
You got it.
Ceremonies have fun. Oh wait, only one. Oh wait, no.
Part of the experience.
Move the chairs back. Move the chairs back. There you go.
It's the first, first time I did sworn in.
No, I haven't taken one with only you up there two because it's great.
Okay, yeah. Here. No. You guess this is a good picture.
Welcome to Valley County, you guys.
Yes, definitely.
Might be us some future football and basketball players.
Yeah, baseball.
And baseball.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You have all kinds of choices. Hockey, skiing.
I always ski.
You ski too.
Okay, the next one up. Um, let's see. Let's do... Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Sherry Moplin.
I, Sherry Moplin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
And that I will perform the duties of Commissioner.
And that I will perform the duties of Commissioner.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Very nice. You want a picture too? You got to sign this as well.
Ed Smarts is fine.
You look toward the workroom. What'd you get? Were you turned? You just got turned around to it again. What's that?
Do you guys mind if we take a picture with the three of us?
Nope, we'll do that.
Ham request.
Ham.
Sure. Then we're gonna, we'll do the sheriff first. Next, then we'll do the pictures after that word.
That works perfect.
Sheriff, come on up.
I missed your shaking.
Only time you ever made you swear is sheriff.
I was trying to say, but I got a couple of them.
You got yours? You ready?
I am.
Okay, please repeat after me. I, Patty Bowlen.
I, Patty Bowlen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
And that I will perform the duties of sheriff.
And that I will perform the duties of sheriff.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
And I think you guys need a picture up there too.
Get the whole famdamily up there.
We're now for three taking a picture together. Should've did that further.
Hey. Come on up guys, up front. Take your mask off. You want? Oops, sorry. Move the chairs, Patty.
Sergeant's not here.
Do you want someone else to take pictures?
Sergeant, take a picture.
Get up there.
Brandon, come on.
Can I get one?
At least we get one before he comes up.
Come on, big smiles.
I'm so happy.
I guess I should have my hands.
Remind me to sing so you guys all smile. I'm so happy.
I'm just pressing a stamp on a uniform.
I'm surprised seeing him smiling.
Yeah, there's that too. Okay, Brandon, are you gonna get up here real quick?
You got it.
Come on over here, shorty.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you everyone for coming.
Thank you.
Brian, you want to do it with the three commissioners?
Oh, and I think that's...
I know. Sheriff? I just wanted, is that clip on or is that real?
Oh, it's clipped off.
Come on up.
Patty might stay for one more.
Yeah.
Is that fine?
Brian and Patty want the three of us together. Yeah, everybody sanitize your hands afterward.
Republican Party wants a picture day. Do you want to be in it with Republican Party?
Can you make me look skinnier?
All right, Dave, let's take one with the three of us and we'll put it on the website. We all have individual ones, but we don't have one together. Hey, Pat, will you take one more of the three of us?
I quit shaking. Hang on. Too much coffee.
Thank you guys. Everybody have a great day.
Wait, wait, wait. We got one more picture.
Okay. Oh, come on up. We got plenty of time.
Mr. Chairman, we'd like the prosecuting attorney, our old prosecuting attorney, just to come up. We're just gonna say some words.
Okay.
About her, so once the office comes back.
I'm sure I'll hide both of us since we're so incredibly tall.
That's a lot of teeth. All right, thanks.
Judy, you're welcome anytime.
Thank you.
Come on up anytime.
You as well.
Carol ran off already.
I have another two years.
A lot easier than what you guys got this time.
I'm trying to think of something.
You know, I would accept the classifieds. Don't even care about them. I started reading something and I was just like, no, click off.
Okay.
Oh, all right, yeah. I didn't even think that I could.
I'm sure that wasn't God.
Trudy, how's retirement?
It's awesome.
Could you just lie a little tiny bit and say, you know, it's boring, there's nothing to do?
No, not at all.
Yeah. But I told her that I was really planning it, so maybe she'll turn it on. But, uh... She, you know, I figured. Really, I didn't thought it was outstanding either. Then it wasn't like...
Well, would you do the...
Um... I didn't, I forgot what I showed up. I had a few questions. And sometimes I can remember. My son's, my adult son's.
We're getting out.
Yeah, I'll get him. Love you. So, that's okay. We're leaving on Thursday.
I think I gotta go upstairs.
All right.
I gotta go upstairs.
I do have, I do have a list.
There she is.
There she is. Come on up.
Oh, it's Carol. Oh, oh. Oh, I'm doing this. Yeah, yeah. So we lost.
I'm gonna say it for her.
We're gonna have Carol.
No, she went to...
I was, yes, I went. Oh, okay.
Well, real quickly, um, we do have an outgoing elected official, prosecuting attorney Carol Brockman. And we are extremely excited to have Ryan come aboard, but we wanted to just publicly acknowledge the service that Carol has provided to Valley County over the years. Initially as just a deputy prosecuting attorney and then ultimately as a prosecuting attorney. It's been nothing but a great working relationship, Carol, with all of the departments. We've made some real good positive strides on behalf of Valley County. I appreciate your service, so I just wanted to let anyone else publicly acknowledge the thanks that we have for you and the service that you have in fact provided to Valley County. Nothing but a true appreciation for your service. So thanks, Carol.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, I think too is, you know, we deal with a lot of different attorneys in this job and I think the thing I like most about Carol is she's so easy to talk to. You can go and knock on her door and talk about anything and everything and that's, that's really neat to feel, have that friendship, have that relationship. We're gonna miss you.
Well, I appreciate that. It's been a pleasure. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Carol, for being a mentor this year when learning has been a great beacon of light for what I'm needing to learn. So thank you for all your help and assistance.
I agree. I agree wholeheartedly. I really appreciate all your input over the last couple of years that I've been here and really appreciate all the guidance you've given me while I've been here, so.
Thank you.
You wouldn't be missed, but we'll, we'll all be jealous if you're staying around.
I'll send a picture of this. I did court on Friday. I was on the boat and the judge was like, where are you?
I just like how your heart is always there for the county. Every decision that you make is all about how it's gonna benefit the county. I appreciate that a lot. Okay, well, thank you, everybody. It's been a pleasure. And all the courage.
Enjoy it.
So we have some cards for you and, well, and your case, but there's cards. Thank you.
And your final piece.
And we got receipts for you as well. Oh, thank you. Okay. Wonderful. So, thank you.
Thanks, you.
And now you ride off into the sunset.
Yeah, we're all jealous. Does that float off into the sunset?
That floats.
Yep. Thank you all. Thank you. It was wonderful.
Yeah, please take a muffin and the prosecuting attorney's gum and provide it.
Ellen Stacy.
And I don't want to presume, but I think we have our new chief deputy prosecuting attorney in the audience as well. I think prosecuting attorney Brian Knuckle will introduce him. This is Mr. Brian Oakley and we again welcome you with open arms and we're excited to have you again, I think, first of February. Is that what we're hearing or?
February 2nd.
Fantastic. So we'll have a chief deputy onboard February 2nd, so welcome as well.
Great, Brian. Welcome. Absolutely excited.
Yeah, thank you. It's a, it's a pleasure to be here and nice to kind of put some faces to the names that I've been studying over the last few weeks.
How faces?
It's really, it's really an exciting opportunity to go up here and, and work with everybody in the county, so I'm, I'm just absolutely thrilled. Great to hear, Brian.
Great, great.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
All right, so we have 10 minutes and then the meeting will begin.
I got to wait, you haven't just seen the practice.
I love that, yeah. I appreciate it.
Did we do weekend, Doug?
With salmon.
What?
Hockey tournament, yeah, so.
That's all outdoors too, right?
It's all outdoors, yeah.
Good weather for it.
Yeah, it was beautiful. It was cold. Yesterday morning it was 1 degrees while the kids were playing at 7:00 AM, so. Yeah, we, uh, good time. It was just me and my son, so great, great bonding moment for him and I. Great memory making, travel experience.
Yeah. You guys stayed at the Stagecoach?
We stayed at the Stagecoach.
I spent a lot of time at the Stagecoach.
Did you?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that was our meeting place for all of our round trips over there.
Okay.
So, yeah, I was on a like first name basis.
With all of the...
For a long time. That and birthrooms.
So I didn't get to go to the mountain, but doesn't look like they got any new...
Saturday, I guess they set a record for attendance at Cameron.
Are you kidding me? Wow. Wow, good for them.
I, as I said, we were up there on Friday and there was, you know, a normal day at Cameron. You know, ski up, but you know, maybe a few people in front of you type of thing.
Yeah.
And then, um, yeah, I had no interest in going anywhere on Saturday.
Not with that many people. Let them enjoy it. I enjoyed it on Wednesday.
I've been hearing, I was gonna say, I've been hearing like the, uh, bogeys is about like, you know, two hour plus drive.
Wow.
Like, you know, it's over two hours.
Get up there.
And I don't know if they're limiting day count.
Oh, yeah.
Did you have a call, Luigi? See, they sent her to me sideways.
Can't flip it.
No.
And we haven't learned how to flip it.
Did you need to talk to you? I was gonna tell you there was goodies in here. Did you amend the agenda? No, but Doug's already taking care of it because it's, well...
That would be a separate matter for meeting and zoning or to make sure that it's clear on their agenda that up to 10 people can be...
And then let one in, that kind of a deal.
I haven't really looked at the stuff on the agenda because I mean I...
Didn't get Amanda's deal?
Yeah, but I always go to it on Sunday.
Oh.
And I couldn't get into emails, so. We're going back to our other...
I could just send to my personal email too. You can ask. Then that way it's still, I mean, I was, I think it was before I got elected, I was on that list and it's kind of nice because if I do miss...
I don't know. I... That's a... So now I do have Amanda's. I didn't even look because I didn't think I could get in, so. Doug, do we still have money available for McKenzie out of any of the COVID funds now or is now, it's all on us now?
So it is what we're looking at. I did reach out to emergency services manager Juan Bonilla on Thursday of last week. He sent me an application that we could apply for additional funding from, um, the state.
The FEMA stuff, yeah.
Yeah, and I guess...
What do we budget, $32,000?
Well, that's just for the county service. What she's doing is PIO work for the EOC and, um...
And we need reimbursement for that.
Uh, I would believe that the county does. In fact, if the county is going to continue to pay that, uh, there should be a reimbursement request being made. I think ultimately the commissioners do need to make a determination if they want McKenzie to continue to do that on behalf of the EOC or...
I just wondered if there's a pool of funds there, but...
We, I just again, yeah, received an application that Juan had sent to me and I haven't had an opportunity to take a close look and apply for it yet.
I brought cups from home. If you guys want cups with... So Doug, printing costs for... Oh, never mind. Monday, Casey.
Good morning. Happy Monday.
Doug, have you looked at comparing the power bill for the courthouse versus the last year?
We're about right on track.
About the same?
Yep.
Can't find it for the courthouse. Well, there it is. $2,600? There's something I can't open. So Doug, whenever you're ready.
When you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
We're still...
We're still live. Okay, at this time I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Today is January 11th. This time I please ask everyone to rise and say the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everyone. Um, everyone is good with the agenda? Is there something we need to add?
Someone in conversation was about the open meeting, but I think Doug's handled that, so I think.
Okay, so entertaining me a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda. If you have.
Move it second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Big item up on our agenda, it's an action item. I'm gonna appoint the 2021 Valley County Board of County Commissioners Chairperson. What is your pleasure there?
Have it and say if you don't want it. Should we take a coin to vote because he loses? I'm fine with you staying on. If that's a position that you want.
I appreciate that. Make you make that a motion? I'm action on.
I move that we reappoint Elton Hasbrook as our, we see our Board of County Commissioners Chairperson.
Second now.
Move it second. Any more discussion? Gabe, you wanna puke? You guys want to throw in here? Okay. Doug? Home favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We're gonna kind of move along today because we do have a big break in the middle of our meeting today, so we want to get this stuff done. The next item is an action item, the claims, board order claims and junior college tuition. Come on up, Casey.
I can see if I can send it. It's right in forward of out of here. If they have to reinstall my PDF reader.
Everybody good with the claims? Let's see, we had... Well, that was all cat fund stuff, wasn't it? I don't know.
Interlock.
Two interlocks.
That's all it was on there? You said no, no junior college?
No junior college.
I'll make a motion that we approve the claims and board order claims.
Move it second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I'm signing everything, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm under suspicion now.
Thanks, Casey. Have a great day. Okay, we're gonna go right on down our agenda. Our next one is the electoral officials report. First one up is treasurer Gabe.
Morning, sir.
Good morning, commissioners and clerk Miller. I'd like to, first, I'd like to inform you that I did swear in Jody Green as the new chief deputy treasurer this morning, so she's filling that role now. We're working on the supplemental role in our office, so we'll be getting those bills out probably next week sometime. And I've got a few action items this morning. First is the quarterly report, joint quarterly between treasurer's office and the clerks. Hopefully you received that by email.
Yep, and this is for the, from October to the end of the year, so this is the second quarter?
Be the first, first quarter of the fiscal year.
We're sitting about right?
Yes.
Amazing that we started out at eighteen million, now we're up to twenty-one.
I had an email issue, so I was not able to go clear through this, but I will.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion we approve the quarterly reports from October to January one, two thousand twenty-one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Your next one is an action item, it's approval of a new credit card?
Yeah, a new debit card account with Idaho First Bank. The building department has requested that. And I'd recommend that we do establish that account with a two thousand dollar balance.
Everyone good with that? I know they came in and talked to you a while back about it.
Yeah.
Just one card, right?
Just one card. They've been using June's card and it's just gonna make it easier if they have their own department.
I move that we approve the establishment of a new debit card account with Idaho First Bank for a two thousand dollar balance for the building department.
Aye, we'll second that.
And move it seconded. I guess my one question, Doug, is we, are we still gonna see those little purchases that building department, is this gonna be one credit card payment? As it is now, it's broken down?
You'll still see it broken out.
Okay. So it's been moved a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
And then your last one, Gabe, is the tax cancellation.
Yeah, I'd like to present tax cancellations, numbers twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, just to, I apologize, if we can just go back to the first matter, the building department would be for building official and net, Derek. So it's not, it's not maintenance, just to, my apologies.
I'm sorry.
Just to clarify.
I was thinking of those guys.
Good clarification.
I thought they came over and asked here for one too, didn't they? Couple, three weeks ago?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't think they did.
Who did?
Or wait.
I don't remember.
Buildings and grounds.
We did, yes.
We did. That one has already been...
That one's been done.
That one's already been approved. For the building department, the building official.
Right.
Okay, so let's move on to tax cancellations.
These are tax cancellations, numbers twenty-one dash twenty-three through twenty-one dash twenty-eight. And there, this is the last of that issue that we discussed a few weeks ago where two thousand nineteen assessments were not deleted in our system. They have to be deleted or they'll automatically be added to next year. So these are, these are Pay at Lakes charges that were actually certified in nineteen, two thousand nineteen and collected. So they should not be on the two thousand twenty property tax statements.
So they won't be on there going forward? So when they were putting on there, that's because they were behind in their payment?
They were, yeah, they were behind in their payments prior to two thousand nineteen, so Pay at Lakes, the Sur District certified them to tax rolls. We added them and they just didn't get, just didn't get removed. It's kind of a, kind of an awkward piece of our software. You have to manually remove those and if that, if that's overlooked, they just stay there. That's what happened.
So Gabe, would it be all right since we're all the same, we did all of them at once?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve all the tax cancellations twenty-one to twenty-two.
Move it seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, and I have those forms if I could bring those up.
You bet.
Are you guys all up and running on your emails now? That's... Are you doing the temporary stuff? Are you fully?
Just the temporary.
And June, should we have gotten your, your tax cancellation or did you send it to us after?
I sent it to Johnny using the mail, email issues. Jeremy finally got me up. I did mail it to the three dudes and Doug.
And unfortunately, we don't have it yet. Do you have anything in your hands that?
I do.
We can look at?
Welcome to Life Size. Enter the extension.
There you go, sir. Thank you.
That concludes my report unless you have any questions for me.
Have you got any idea everybody's paying taxes? You're still into it, aren't you? I mean, it was due the twentieth, so you should kinda know who's, who's hasn't paid yet.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've, we've completed our...
Quite a few?
It's, it's average. It's, it's, it's normal.
I'm glad you, we started around four hundred and twenty or so that didn't pay and you finally got that whittled down. Is it about what it is this year?
Oh, I see what you're saying. I'm not sure on that yet. You're talking about potential tax deed properties?
Right.
I'm not sure on that yet. No, it's, we'll be, we'll be working on that here, here soon. I think our reminder notices go out the first or second week of February. So we're, we're actually putting together our tax deed calendar right now.
Okay.
We'll start pulling those and see how many we have, but I have no reason to think we have more than normal, so...
Well, if you find out, maybe shoot me an email because that's kinda, to me, tells me how things are gonna roll in later on.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yep, we'll let you know as soon as we have those numbers.
Great, thanks, man.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our assessor, June Fulmer. Come on up, June, you have an action item?
I do, and Sherry said you didn't get copies?
Haven't gotten the darn thing.
And I'll go through this with you in a minute.
Okay, go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Okay, what we have is, and I gave you copies of all of the Idaho code. This was a property that went on the, that went on the occupancy missed roll. Per the code, these assessments, when they go out, they have to be out. This is where it gets convoluted. The last day to mail these assessments is the first Monday in January by five P M. Last day to appeal these assessments is the first Monday in January by five P M. We did mail these assessments out before Christmas, excuse me, before Christmas. So the property owners had ample time to contact our office. This appeal was received the first Monday in January that afternoon. Since we didn't have time to look at it that day and the Board of Equalization adjourned that day at five, we went out, we looked at it on Thursday because the property owner was questioning the square footage. The appraiser made a very small adjustment to the finished square footage of this property. Because of that, I can present it as a cancellation. It's a twenty-twenty value. Since we needed to make that small correction, that's why I am presenting it. I have given you copies of all the codes. I have given you a copy of his appeal form. And the assessor calendar showing these timeline of dates. So I am requesting for parcel number R P M zero four zero six zero zero one zero one seven zero. We had a total market value of five hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred ninety dollars. With this adjustment to finished square footage, I am requesting a new market value for twenty-twenty of five hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. A difference of fourteen thousand, forty-two dollars to be canceled.
And then I see where the applicant is also gonna apply for homeowner's exemption, so that'll go on next.
They have applied for the homeowner's exemption, yes, and they will get it on this value because it was an occupancy.
I have a twenty-seven hundred and fifty square foot home that was built for four hundred and fifteen thousand. This is a regular stick-built home.
Yes, ma'am.
Interesting. And at the adjusted rate of five seventy-seven, that's still only two hundred and ten dollars a square foot? I haven't heard anybody building up here at two hundred and ten dollars a square foot.
Yes, and that's a twenty-twenty value. I'm sure that our twenty-twenty-one values are going to be different.
Well, it could be too. The homeowner did a lot of the work. I don't know, but...
That does not, that does not affect our values if the homeowner does a lot of their own work. We have to go by what the property will sell for.
So Sherry, you're saying it's still too low for the home?
I mean...
Should be more like six hundred.
I haven't, I haven't seen anybody building at two hundred and ten thousand for two, three years at least. So, I mean, most people are building right now at three hundred plus, and that does not include ground. So, I mean, I definitely don't go along with the four hundred and fifteen. And I think that, you know, looking at fair market value, it's, in my opinion, would still be above the five seventy-seven, so, I mean, if that's what the assessors are saying it is, I would go with the assessor value. Is Jared online?
No.
No? What's your date? Do you hear anybody building at two hundred and ten square?
No.
So, I mean, even at, even at two hundred and ten a square, that's, that's a heck of a deal right now. So, I mean, there's no way that, at four hundred and fifteen thousand, that's a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. I mean, that's, we can't even get a pre-manufactured home placed on a foundation up here at that. So he got a heck of a deal from his builder if that's what they got, so...
This was a two thousand eighteen building permit.
So maybe then, I mean, even two years ago, it was a hundred dollars.
Yeah, possibly.
Square, but it was still two and a quarter, so, I mean...
But I think you kinda have to go with, with the assessor values they use. We don't know if this is an upgrade or, you know, I can't say it without sounding rude, but a high-end home or a middle-class home or...
It's, it's, it's not a high-end, but it's a nice home.
Yeah, I mean, they're starting nice homes, high-end homes up here right now are seven hundred dollars a square.
Gee, for Christmas.
That's what Dusty been building for like that, or really high-end, so...
Jeez.
I'll take one square foot.
Exactly, me too. So, do you wanna motion then?
Yep, we need a motion then to approve this tax for this value cancellation.
I move that we approve the value cancellation twenty-twenty-one.
Move it second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You want me to sign this one, June? Do you have one there?
Thank you for bringing copies.
Hey, I don't see David here.
He's on the phone, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, David, are you online?
I am.
Okay, you're up next. You're up next.
Okay, hey, I just have a couple things to report. One major thing is that we're completely on the fiber optic, this is the new fiber optic that we've been working on for quite a while at the road department, we call Anix, and at the main facility here. We don't have all the speed that we, we're even assigned for, but we need to do some testing. We'll be doing that testing starting tomorrow because we didn't wanna interfere with the email migration that's going on today and that Jeremy's working on today. We got about half or three-quarters of speed that they, that we have. It still orders of magnitude faster than before, so it's pretty nice. It helped with migration, speeding up all of that. That was one thing I had, and then the other thing was an action item for an agreement. Hopefully you have in front of you, and so that's what that's for. We're gonna do the same kind of agreement with the theme of all their legal counsel's looking at it right now. And then any other entity that wants...
It costs the county a lot of money to retrieve data or get rid of malware. Can we ask for reimbursement to that cost?
I don't think we've covered any of that. It's maybe a legal question. This is sort of just kind of getting on the same page technically. It allows us to disable them if they're doing something in, you know, outside of the agreement and, you know, have some mechanism of control and visibility into their, kind of the way they're doing business, so we make sure we're protected.
Yeah, but I think it's something we should consider down the road is amending this sometime that if they do cause a breach and we have to pay a lot of funds to fix the problem, it should be reimbursable.
Okay.
Something to think about.
Okay, is that something you wanna do right now?
No.
Just down the road?
When you can get to it. I know you got other things on your mind right now, but I think down the road, we need to look at that. With this deal that's going on nationally, I think there's gonna be a lot of cost now. Come back in and repair all these computer systems and it's too bad that we have to pay for it, or the taxpayers should have to pay for that, but...
So it does state, David, it does state that...
Go ahead, sorry.
If there is a violation of use, that we can actually eliminate them. If, or Valley County Information Technology Department may take such action as it deems necessary or appropriate, including, but not limited to, termination. So it's not limiting it to, so whatever the action is, I mean, we could call it out a little more clearly, but this doesn't negate our ability to go after financial compensation.
I think you're probably, you're right about that, it sounds like. This was written in conjunction with our prosecutor attorney's office a while back.
Everybody good with this? I think this is a good start, David. I like it. And then you've got a note down at the bottom as far as elections. Or exceptions. Or exceptions. Exceptions.
Yeah, exceptions, that was kind of, if they have something that's, you know, better or, you know, acceptable to us, that we don't have to force our exact processor, you know, technology on them. It's not, that's not the intent of this, it's just to protect them and us.
So this is what we use for McCall Police as well, the same policy?
Yeah, and they have a copy of it. Uh, a few weeks ago, they were trying to get it to their, uh, legal counsel, and, um, the Stillman meeting last week, we talked about that, and Dallas mentioned that it was still, um, in process there, they're still looking at it.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion then to approve this new remote access policy?
I'll make a motion that we approve the remote access agreement between Valley County and McCall Roll Fire.
Second.
Move the second, any more questions? Good work on this, David.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks. And I just wanted to say, I really appreciate everybody's patience with the email migration. I know it's been frustrating. Um, I'm back on the, the new original email, going to office dot outlook dot com, so mine's migrated back up, so those should, if you have any kind of glitch there, go back to the original link, and you should be able to get into your email. Thanks for everybody's patience.
David? Oh, sorry. Oh, I just got to ask you a question, David. So I'm, I was on the temporary link this morning, and now I cannot get onto the original or the temporary.
I can get on any.
Come look at.
That'd be great, yeah.
I couldn't get on, I was on the temporary this morning, and then it stopped working for me, and then I jumped back to and relogged into the original, and I was able to get in. Uh, we'll send somebody, myself or some one of the staff here, way to help you out.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and a second, all those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and we all three sign.
And David, would you like me to email that directly to you or to Chief DeYoung?
Uh, either way works for me. And you know, the commissioners mentioned that breach, the SolarWinds breach, I read something this morning where that's, uh, anticipating maybe a hundred billion dollars of cost, uh, nationally for that breach. Would you think of that in the context of something like a, I think Hurricane Katrina was like twenty billion, so these things are, tend to be costly.
Very costly.
And that's all I had. Do you have any questions, or live in August, you can email?
No, I think we're good, David, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Okay, the next department head is Pat. Good morning.
Good morning. I did make copies of these. It should have been in your packet last week, and I think it did cause some confusion. Um, so I just went ahead and made copies.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, the, with the newest relief bill that went in last month, one of the things that they've allowed us for us to be able to change our flexible benefit plan, um, and amend it for a few things. So one of them, um, if you look at the front page, so what I have done is I've checked the ones that I think we should do, um, not on your copy because I didn't have a copy of that one. Um, so the first amendment, so these are two, let me read back, these are temporary carryover rules. So that means that when the plan year ends, which our 2020 plan year ended on, um, December thirty-first, when the plan year ends, then, um, normally we allow people to carry over five hundred dollars into the next plan year. So this allows, uh, to carry up your full balance into the 2021 plan year, and then at the end of 2021, you can also carry your full balance over to 2022. So that's really what this is talking about, that we can carry balances over, um, instead of losing all of the benefit, as it were. So my recommendation is we carry unused F S A balances from plan year ending in 2020 to plan year 2021, and then carry over unused F S A balances for plan year ending in 2021 to plan year 22. And then, um, we don't have anybody in the dependent care plan, so I just, you know, said the health F S A, it won't hurt us to do the dependent care plan, but, um, but we just don't have anybody in it. So those are my recommendations for that section. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Makes sense to me.
Was there any expense to the county at all?
No, actually, it helps the county, because if, um, somebody takes their full amount out, uh, prior to their leaving, we have to pay it, well, this, I guess that kind of extends that a little bit, but it gives people more time to use it up. So it really does help people. Um, the second one has to do with the grace period option, um, and our plan already offers an, a rollover, so that doesn't apply to us. On the second page, amendment two, temporary relief for post-termination reimbursements from health F S As. Uh, that allows us to permit terminated employees with remaining balances in their health plans to receive reimbursements, um, through the end of the plan year. So the way our plan works right now is that we, when, um, somebody terminates, they have sixty days to take any money that they may have, you know, out of this plan, but after that sixty days is done, they're done, they can't get it added again. This, um, allows to the end of the year, and my recommendation is that we don't allow it, because it, it just gives us more of an opportunity for people to take their full amount out. Um, so I just recommend that we do not amend the plan, plan to do that. Um, and then amendment three has to do with increasing the maximum age of eligible dependents for use of dependent care funds. We don't have anybody in dependent care, um, so, you know, we haven't, I think we had one person the whole time, between the time I was here before and the time this time, that has ever taken advantage of that. So I just said, do not amend our plan for this option, for that reason. And then the next one, um, allows F S A election changes for any other, for any reason. Currently, we allow people to, uh, change their election mid-year if they have a change in family status. Um, and the recommendations, both from our administrator, and I was reading the provisions of this as well, I don't think we should change that. So my recommendation is do not allow, amend our plan for this option. I, in other words, I want to, um, my recommendation is that we keep it so that it's only for, if you have a change in family status, you can change your election. And a change of family status would be something like, um, somebody, um, has a death in the family, um, they have, uh, um, the spouse has dropped coverage, and now they need to be able to add them onto their coverage, and those type of things. So it's very limited as to how somebody would be able to do that, and I like to keep it that way. Um, otherwise, we open up a whole can of worms. And those are the amendments. So what I need is for you all to, uh, approve if you agree with my recommendations, and then I'll, I'll just have you sign this one, or you can sign that, it won't matter.
This came down from the Trump administration, didn't it?
It did.
I remember reading about it.
Yeah.
I can't get on anything either.
He's, yeah, they're.
Oh, okay.
So I would entertain a motion then to approve this decision on the flex plan agreement.
Question I have had is in the back of your mind on the temporary rule amendment four, because we don't know what we don't know about all the COVID stuff, is there any hesitation in the back of our minds about, you know, how, uh, the healthcare, you know, is going to change or how the response to the COVID is going to change? Um, I'm just, if, if there's any kind of election changes for 2021, that would be the only thing that I would think of, is somebody may want to jump on our plan, somebody may want to make a change to the plan this year, just because there's so much unknown right now. So if we make this option of not amending the plan at all, it negates someone's ability to do it. Do you see any hesitation there?
You know, I don't, um, mainly because our health insurance is so rich.
Okay.
And as long as we keep our health insurance in place, I, I just don't have any harbor with it.
Okay.
Um, it's more cumbersome to allow people on and off and to change their elections in mid-year.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, I can see all kinds of reasons why people would want to do that. So by, you know, not in a positive way, right? Right? So, um, as an example, somebody, um, has an election of twenty-five hundred dollars, they take that twenty-five hundred dollars, um, and now they say, well, I can't afford that anymore, so they want to change their election. They've already have a negative balance in there, so that would not, um, that would not be good, right? And based on that provision, we could change their election down to five hundred, well, they've already been paid out the twenty-five. So it.
All right, I'll go with your recommendation.
Yeah.
Will you make that a motion?
I move that we approve the decision on the flex plan amendments.
I'll second that.
Move a second, all fairer please, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Make sure I did that right, Pat. Anything else you need to talk about?
Probably not, just, uh, the latest on, uh, COVID is that we're close to nine, nine people being positive per day in Valley County. But this to keep you up on my little rolling pally. So it has, uh, the numbers have increased exponentially the last week or two, so, it's, we knew this was going to come.
And hopefully after this, things will start really diving off, that's the hope.
I hope so, I think as people are able to get the vaccine, if they can get them deployed, you know, more and more, uh, maybe it'll slow down a bit, so. I still don't know whether I have it or not, the vaccine.
Adams County is really the main hotspot right now in the county.
Adams?
Yeah.
Really? Because for a while, they were the smallest county for most of the summer.
I came out of CDC last Thursday.
Yeah, and the thing to remember is it can happen.
No, I mean.
Adams County? I'll be darned.
Yeah, yeah.
Haven't seen that.
They're online for school now.
Just have to be vigilant.
Yep. Okay, thanks, Pat.
All right, thanks.
Next item on our agenda is our Recreation Director, Larry Laxton, and you've got some action items.
Good morning. So I've got, uh, two grants that we're applying for. The first one is, uh, Wellington, and, um, it'll be an O R M B grant. Total amount is twenty-eight thousand dollars, the match is a thousand dollars in the Cougar Mountain Club, and a thousand dollars out of my Wellington budget, which we actually got seventy-four hundred dollars in from the campground last year, so we got plenty in the budget.
Well, the year before it was what, thirty-two hundred?
Yeah, yeah.
That's really taken off.
Yeah, so I just need signatures on, uh, I need two signatures on that.
If we need a motion to approve, is this a letter of support?
Yeah, it's a letter of support, and, yeah, I need you to sign the actual grant.
So the only action item we have is a special permit, so can we sign a letter of support if they, wasn't added as an action?
It says action items, and it has all of the.
Oh, got it. Okay, never mind, sorry.
Don't do that to me.
I got your back, Larry.
Thank you.
So we need a motion then to approve that, letter of support?
I'll make a motion that we approve the letter of support for Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation.
Move a second, all fairer please, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then you have another one for.
Signature here and then a signature without it.
Okay.
Commissioners, my apologies for interrupting, just for clarification, this is for the grant application and a letter of support.
Yes, for the Wellington warming hut roof and chimney repair.
So I'll amend that to say that it's for both of those items.
And I think Mary did an excellent job of putting that grant together, by the way.
So Doug, are those first two ones the same? Because one just says Wellington Snow Park, one says Wellington Warming Hut, but they say exactly the same thing.
Same thing, yes.
So.
It's covering all the spaces.
Okay.
Yeah, my apologies, we got it on there twice, it looks like.
Better than none.
That's true.
Okay, go ahead, Larry.
So the next one is for a utility truck. Um, this is a truck to haul fuel and equipment to, um, upper elevation, and when we go to Warm Lake, the hot seat our cat. Uh, this, uh, the truck that we have now, I think Jeff can tell you the kind of shape it's in.
Is that the duly with the tank in the back?
Huh?
Is that the duly with the tank in the back?
Yes.
The thing is, it looks horrible, it sounds bad.
It's, uh.
Oh.
It's in pretty bad shape. So this will be a three-quarter ton flatbed with, uh, fuel tank, which makes you feel a lot, we're hauling a lot of fuel all the time, and it worries me at times. Yeah. Yeah, this, so, this grant is for thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars, of which the match is eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars from Pilt. And so.
Can you say that again, Larry? Thirty-seven thousand?
Thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars, and the match would be eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-one from Pilt. It's a fifty-fifty match for this vehicle. And I actually have two to sign, because we're going to apply with the O R M B and with the, um, R T P. I'm hoping it's the O R M B, that, that drag that we went through with R T P is three years out still, so.
And then Jeff, you, you will probably surplus the old truck.
Yes. Are you going to use this year round?
Year round.
Okay. I just mentioned some of those stuff, so.
Yeah.
It'll be your summer maintenance.
It'll be summer maintenance, absolutely. We can, so the reason for the flatbed is we can put a lawnmower on it, we can put, um, all of our lawn equipment, we post, because we're always out there building posts, building fence, constantly.
And so I entertain a motion for this one as well.
One question, please. So why wasn't this in your budget bias? Why are we taking it from Pilt?
Uh, we discussed that about, uh, I think about five months ago, I asked for, uh, to do it, and you guys said you'd do it with Pilt.
I really like to see these kind of things in budgets, so it's in your department, and we're not taking that Pilt.
Yeah, this was, this is prior to when we went through the budget. I didn't even under, realize that.
I think we talked about this back in August, wasn't it?
Yeah, I, I was kind of surprised, because I didn't realize we could use Pilt for this type of stuff, so, yeah. But this is all for, I mean, we're all on Forest Service ground.
And I think that size of a pickup duly is, that's a heck of a buy.
Single.
Single tire?
Yeah. That duly going up to, uh, upper elevation is.
Squirrely.
Squirrely, to say the least, yeah.
Okay.
Just makes our, our budgeting cleaner, if we can put all expenses within your department. So that's all I'm asking.
Yep, and I think, you know, if there's something down the road you're thinking of next year, bring it in around budget time.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move that we approve the off-road motor vehicle proposal to purchase a utility vehicle.
Second then?
Move a second, all fairer please, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So this is also being applied as R T P.
Oh.
Whichever one we get.
This will go as an R T P, just let you guys know. You can say the kind of issue I deal with, I'll, I'll give you the state bids, you have to go over there.
Okay. Here's your old file folder.
I was asking, Fred and I went down to Boise yesterday, and man, you don't hit snow until way long.
Did you look at the forecast?
Yeah, I did, but I don't trust it anymore.
Well, there is that, but.
Yeah.
Talked with the guys over at Island Park, uh, this morning, yeah, they can barely broom. It's just, it's unbearable.
Bad year, unless we get it all.
It's good out there, Larry. It's, it's holding up well.
It's holding up better farther south than it is north. Anderson Creek is hard as a rock, but, uh, that's a strange snow up north.
Yeah, it's.
It's bonding as well.
That cold temperature.
Yeah.
Sugar snow?
Uh, no, it's not even sugar, it's, it's almost like an ice snow. It's like it got beat up real bad up in the atmosphere before it came down, so the flakes are broken. Normally what we try to do, put the snow in a pillar, and it spins, it breaks the arms and bonds the snow. It is bonding this year, oh. Now, who would have thought there'd be science in snow?
That's all I gotta do, I don't sign up here and.
Yeah, you sign right there.
I didn't do the other side.
The other one, you didn't have that.
You know, in the past, I mean, we have had winter carnival time, you know, people freaking out of what we were going to be for snow, so this is not abnormal, but.
I think the most abnormal thing, abnormal thing we found. I think the most abnormal thing, abnormal thing we found is, is I would say 50% of, of our crowds are off in Washington. I talked to Rog Baden, he said that's the same way with Brundage. They had another parking lot and it's 50% Washington. And, uh-
That's because they can't do anything over in Washington.
Yeah, that thing is they're not getting bags.
Yeah.
I know.
That's the first matter under-
Okay. And you have one more after this, right?
No, you've got to vote.
Well, I mean, you have another action.
I do?
Prove a special permit for truck vehicles. Now, it's just the form you want us to approve.
That was the form yesterday. He was supposed to get on the phone to discuss that.
Mr. Matthew Gantz, Mr. Chairman.
That's the one where he doesn't actually live back there.
Right, right.
But he does a lot of search and rescue stuff and it goes back there and helps some of the people.
Matthew, you're on the phone?
Wait, can you just get that?
Can you understand that this permit, have you read through it, or have you had a chance to read through it?
I have not seen any written permit.
You have not seen this yet? Okay, well.
No, I have not seen the permit, but I certainly understand the issues and the coordinates, et cetera.
And this is a, a yearly agreement. It's not a lifetime permit, right?
That's correct. It's yearly.
Renewed every year.
Yep.
I know I saw something from here a while back that you wanted it to be a longer permit, and we just can't do that. So the goal here is to approve this format, or are we approving the permit with-
That's, that's the format that we've used for the last four years.
Okay.
So I'm, and I, I'm comfortable with it. It's got all the rules, you know. They can't be on that road if, if the temperatures warm up or, um, like New Year's or President's Day, the high use areas, just for the safety of everybody, but it still gets people in to visit their homes and take care of stuff.
So you need a motion from us then to approve this with Matt?
Yeah, because it's different from the original, the original intent was it was only for homeowners. And he isn't a homeowner, so I had to bring it to you guys since we're changing the original intent.
Well, and I'm assuming down the road in a few years that if we start getting more of these kind of guys that aren't homeowners, we may have to come back and relook at this.
I agree. I, I think it's going to go from the few that we have now to a whole lot. The guys again over in Island Park are telling me they're having a lot of trouble. People are bringing their own groomers over, you know, no blades or tiller, and they're running whole families up and down their trails, tearing them apart.
Must be, must be able to afford a groomer, just to go right around.
$300,000 groomer, yeah.
Heard you guys want to look at this.
Spend that in maintenance. Yeah, I can take a look. I haven't seen the, deal with versions.
Yeah, and I can, I can meet him out of the parking lot and, and give him a copy of that too, have him sign it.
I think that's appropriate. If David managed to read it, see if he agrees.
Yeah. Um, I did want to abstain from this vote that I do have personal conflict.
You have a personal conflict?
I do.
Okay. Doug, make sure you get that in the minutes. So then I'll make the motion, will you approve this memorandum agreement with, I'm sorry, Matt, I forgot his last name.
Dan.
Dan.
Dan Hockel?
Gantz.
Gantz.
Oh, Matt signing this one, not for the-
Yeah, he'll sign it too.
Got it.
That way that we just see that he understands the, the different roles involved in it. It's all about safety.
I need a second, okay? All those affair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You'll get this from him and get it signed.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Anything else?
We did get an agreement with IDPR, we're going to get a new groomer, one new groomer next year. We have two that are over the 4,000 hours, but they don't have the-
Can we keep one and use it out of Warm Lake?
But we're looking for raised funds to purchase it, then we can use it out of Warm Lake.
There you go.
We've got a private sector group trying to raise funds. Thank you.
You bet. Thanks, Larry. Okay. Next item on our agenda is road and bridge. Jeff? Jeff, does this guy need to come in? You need some help, sir?
I just need some information, is all I need. Uh, there's supposed to be a hearing today at 3 o'clock for the RV park.
That's probably at the city. That's probably not here. That's down City Hall.
Oh, it's down.
Next to the bank?
By the bank, right there.
Oh, okay.
Yep. That's okay. Hey, Jeff, you're up.
Hey, I got two things. Mary did an awesome job on getting, finding us a grant for that Abstein Bridge replacement that's been haunting us for quite a while. This, uh, financial assistance award that you'll hopefully be signing today is for design and engineering. Instruction will come later.
How much is the award?
Uh, it's for $140,000. Our match will be $28,000.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Matt was already in your budget, right?
Yes.
So we need a motion to, to accept that?
What was the match amount one more time?
Uh, 28,000.
I'll make motion that we accept the economic adjustment assistance for the Abstein Bridge.
Give it a second. All fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay.
Your fancy sign here, Tim.
Have you gotten any phone calls about hard snow on the roads?
You know, it's, it turned gray ice and we're pretty much done. All we can do is just throw gravel on it right now.
And we need to rebuild. East Side Fork is a mess.
Yes, that first section, it, it's already, we've already got it going, but it's 2024. So we're, we put mandates on it.
So as I say, you guys just keep throwing cold patch in there and it drop, gets run over.
The cold patch usually holds. It's the road next to the cold patch or around the patch that falls apart then. So it's, it's due for basically probably putting $5,000 worth of greater patches on it this year to totally seal that up and make that thing last until we get going on it in a few years.
Hey, your next action item is the floodplain plan development.
Okay, this is for the East Side Drive Bridge in the McCall Impact area, so we have to go through the city of McCall's floodplain coordinator. This is all being done through Keller and Associates, the engineering company in Boise. So they need your signature on this to keep things moving.
So if this isn't, and like a permit, is it already approved or is this for us to get the permit?
This is for us to get the permit. This is an application through the city of McCall.
We need a motion to approve that?
I move that we approve the application for the floodplain development permit on East Side Drive.
Second then.
Give it a second. All fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
How many? Yes. Double check with, if something I can sign or you, and something that you can sign.
Anything else?
That's all I got for now. Till next week.
Till next week.
I think that's it.
Okay, thanks. Have a great week.
I'm going to call you and talk to you about the pickleball issue up there.
Oh, yeah.
So they had talked to you, so.
They needed more material or some, they needed material or something?
Us to provide the material. I couldn't remember that either.
Well, to level that spot off, I told them we could do a little bit of leveling, but if something had to be hauled in, it was probably not going to be free. So I had them, had them dealing with Tony Meckle because he's right across the road.
Depends on what kind of material they want, isn't it?
Pretty much. I mean, even pit runs can cost us.
Yeah.
Even though it's right out of the pit, we've still got to load it, haul it, push it up to the dozer. And whether or not our material meets engineering spec for what they need.
That's what I told them. It depends on what kind of material we need.
Yeah.
They wanted the road and the parking area, and I said, that doesn't matter if those are on floodplains. So, you know, we don't need to do that. We just need the fork.
Right.
140 by 140.
Then the road going in will be a piece of cake. I mean, we can pioneer that in within probably an hour. Very little tree removals, just kind of pushing, pushing on that lower end to fill the low, the low end and-
So we do not have any of what you would consider appropriate soil or rock to put in there. We would have to purchase it.
Maybe. It's all being engineered. They're going to, I mean, that's a reason they took samples.
They don't want to do the engineering.
I'd say let's put that on the agenda for next week, just so we're all on the same page as far as what we're talking about.
Yeah, and we haven't been able to get onto our email down there since Friday. And I was listening to your conversation, so I texted Mickey. Mickey tried to get onto the old link and she can't, so she should probably call an IT to figure out how to get onto our old emails. I'm sure we've got bunches.
I know they were interested in talking to us as well, so I think maybe just have another conversation with them.
So I'm guessing you guys will figure out if we need it on the next week's agenda.
Yeah.
And that, yeah, that hope and those other people probably need to be on a phone call because I think they winter down where there's no snow. I think.
Year-round pickleball.
Year-round pickleball, yeah. We, we, we play snowball up here, so. And slip and slide.
Hey, thanks, Jeff. You saved up there. So at this time, folks, we're going to recess until noon.
I'm just, we have one more matter. My apologies.
Do we have time?
Well, that's up to you guys. If you guys want to postpone that.
Industry and charity.
I'd say we-
You want to try it?
Oh, I was going to say we could add that on at the end. You got to take one, Jeff.
That's fine.
Or take one of each. My apologies.
It's all right. I didn't think we'd have enough time.
I'm looking for the link though. Do you link anywhere to get on that Zoom? Are we all just going to try and get on?
I couldn't find it either. I looked.
Could one of you guys send that to my Gmail account so I can get on?
We can't. I can't use email, so I'm trying to figure out.
Where I could find it.
Yeah, I tried to search and it won't let me search either, so. Go back a little way.